Can I just mention that I've gotten a couple of emails?
Seriously?
Well, I don't have them in front of me, so.
I'd like to call the August 13th meeting of the City Commission to order and ask those who want to to please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, has the role been taken this evening?
It has. All are present tonight.
Wonderful. We have no proclamations or presentations this evening, which gives us to the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Seeing none, we are on to public input of agenda items. This is an opportunity that anyone in the audience can come and give us any comment on any of the items on the agenda. We ask that you limit your comment to five minutes and ask state your name and address. I'm not seeing anybody here who's rushing up. All right, I will close this portion of the meeting. And we'll ask the city manager to go through the receipt of petitions and communications.
For this evening, under petitions and communications, we have the status report on pending items, and we have a special attachment to it that includes a fairly comprehensive update on many of the activities that we've done in the last year since we had our historic flooding in June of 2017. And you'll notice as you read through the report that there's still a number of activities that are ongoing that we continue to work on as a response to that. But we, based on some questions we've received, we thought it might be nice to have everything in one document for you to have a perspective of that. Then we have the June minutes of the Parks and Recreation Commission, the Planning Commission, the Tax Increment Finance Authority, and Principal Shopping District. And then we have a resignation from the Historic District Commission from Amy Goodrow as she has moved out of the city, so that's been referred to the Appointments Committee. And then you received a thank you note from the City Council of the City of Escanaba for the contribution you made toward the tax tribunal litigation. And then the last item on petitions and communications is receipt of the annual financial report from the Cultural and Recreation Commission.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions on any of those items? Commissioner Gillis?
Yes, I have a question on the minutes of the Planning Commission, page 17 of our packet, but page seven. Under new business for the RFP Subcommittee, it says Kane reported that a request for proposal was released on June 11th seeking the bids to assist in the creation of the 2050 Master Plan.
Yes, the Master Plan will take us through 2050.
Okay. I didn't know if that was supposed to be out that far or not. And then I just want to acknowledge the thank you from Escanaba. As far as I know, we are the only municipality that has helped and hit their legal fees. So they sent us a personal thank you with all the city commissioners that signed it, and I think that's a great tribute to how we help each other.
Thank you. Now on to consent calendar. Are there any items that anyone would want removed from the consent calendar? Seeing none, I will ask the city manager to go through the items that have the asterix next to them so that the commission can make a vote on those items as one lump sum.
The consent calendar items recommended this evening include the minutes of your regular meeting of July 23rd. We're recommending the award of one bid this evening, and it's for the replacement of our current washer extractor unit at Public Safety. And as the communication indicated, our current machine is not functioning properly, and it's very important for the cleanliness of our firefighter gear as it's important for their personal safety. We're recommending a sole source bid with Unimac, who is the industry leader in this production of this machine, and Universal Laundry is the only supplier in Michigan. Many local hotels in this area use Universal Laundry, so service will be easy if it is ever needed. So we're recommending approval of the purchase from Universal Laundry for $11,195. Tonight, we're recommending two new fees for you to consider. The first is for a new youth program that the Recreation Department would offer in the November and December timeframe, and it's for a four-on-four basketball program. The Parks and Recreation Commission has endorsed it and has recommended the fee structure be the same as our current program, which is five-on-five. And what that means, based on our fee setting policy, is that since this is a youth program, it's subsidized with general fund dollars, and the non-city resident rate is 40% higher than the resident rate. So we're recommending approval of that fee. The second fee we're recommending tonight is the application fee for medical marijuana facilities. The ordinance calls for an application fee for each business that applies, and this fee is intended to cover the processing of the application, and it's paid by each applicant and is non-refundable. And it's different than the annual administrative fee, which is allowed by the state law and by our ordinance, which is $5,000 paid every year. This would be a one-time fee, and we're recommending it be set at $200. The next item we have is, as you have seen around town, CMU has been installing additional wayfinding signs. And in 2016, they had two locations where they installed those signs in the city right-of-way. And then this summer, there were three locations where they were installed in the city right-of-way. And our ordinance allows the city manager to approve the installation of those signs in the right-of-way, so that has all been taken care of. But because these signs are so much more permanent in nature and so much larger, CMU agreed to a license agreement with us, which makes it very clear that they're responsible for the upkeep of those signs. And if we have to do something in the right-of-way, they'll work with us to remove them and put them back in place. So we're recommending tonight that you authorize the mayor and clerk to sign both of those agreements. One covers the two locations from 2016, and the other covers the three locations from this year. And the one from 2016 incorrectly lists Kathy Ling still as the mayor, so we will get that corrected before they're signed because it was not intended to be a retroactive agreement. The next agreement we're asking you to authorize the mayor and clerk to sign is an extension of the contract with Renaissance Public School Academy. As you know, last year, we had a pilot program where we offered peak services at Renaissance, and both the school and our peak staff thought that went really well, with only one exception. Last year, they had two teachers who were helping with parts of the program, and as they debriefed at the end of the year, they felt that that might work better if we had two peak staff instead that did that. So the way this year's agreement is drafted is that we would charge the same fees that we pay or charge at the public schools, and the city keeps all of that revenue, which is what we did last year. But then, in addition to that, Renaissance Public School Academy would pay the city $12,800 to cover those two additional staff members. The next item is a continuation of the purchase-buyback program for some of our trucks or our motor pool. As you'll recall, this is an ongoing program we have with Crepo Ford, where we buy the trucks this year at governmental pricing, use them for a year, and then they buy the trucks back at the end of one year. So three of our trucks are coming up on that one-year mark. And Crepo Ford has recommended that instead of replacing them with the Ford F-150s, which are slightly smaller trucks, that we replace them with the bigger trucks, which are the 250s, due to the availability of them and the current pricing. So these cost a little bit more, so we would have to take money out of the motor pool fund balance to do that. But in next year, in 2019, when we turn them in, they will pay us back that higher amount for those trucks. So we're recommending that approval this evening. The next item is an extension of contract with our third-party administrator, who is the company who processes all of our medical prescription and dental claims. The contract with them is coming to an end, but it's important to have continuity with one processor so that we can control costs, be able to look at plan design, and make sure we have good service, not only with our providers, but with our staff. So our current provider, Core Source, has offered a three-year extension of this professional service agreement, and that extension includes a small increase in the administrative fees, but a decrease in fees for our flexible spending account. So actually, over the next three years, we would pay less in fees than what we have been paying, just slightly. And we've been very satisfied with their service level. Since it's a professional service contract, we're not required to bid it, but we typically do ask our agent to look at other pricing to make sure we're still on the ballpark, and they have confirmed that these are appropriate market prices for the services that we're receiving. So we're recommending the mayor and clerk sign that new contract. And then the last item is approval of payrolls and warrants.
I see a motion by Commissioner Kulik, seconded by Commissioner Joseph. Any comments or questions on any of the consent calendar items? Commissioner Kulik?
Just a question on the medical marijuana application fee. Once that's per applicant, per location?
Correct.
So if they were going for more than one location, there'd be more than one fee, correct?
Correct.
And they still have to pay the fee for, to go through the site plan review process and the special use permit process. And once those are done, then they would have to pay us the $5,000 yearly fee.
Yes to everything except for one thing. The way our ordinance is crafted, they pay us the $5,000 administrative fee upfront.
Okay.
And if they, if it's one of the limited licenses, which we have to have a lottery on, if they don't make it to the lottery system, we refund it at that point in time, but that fee is payable upfront.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gillis?
I have a question about the peak program at the Renaissance School. Do we contribute any money to that?
No, our peak program is funded by user fees, and then it's also partially funded by a grant from the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe and a grant from United Way. So no general fund dollars are used toward peak.
Thank you.
Seeing no other questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving through quickly. We are now on to item number 13, which is the approval of the Economic Development Action Plan, which we talked about at our last work session. City Manager, do you have any updates for us?
As the mayor indicated, you've seen various drafts of this plan, and we're doing it for two reasons. One is for compliance with the redevelopment-ready communities. But more importantly, I think it's because it hasn't been updated in 10 years, and our economic conditions have obviously changed over those 10 years. So I think this plan recognizes our current economic climate, not only in the state of Michigan, but in Mount Pleasant, and it provides better focus of how to spend our limited time on economic development activities and is a bit more focused and specific than our prior plan was. As you know, we've received feedback from all of our economic development boards, and we also had the Planning Commission look at it as you requested, and that feedback from your last discussion has been incorporated. So we're recommending tonight that you consider it for approval as presented.
See a motion by Commissioner Kulik, seconded by Commissioner Joseph. Comments or questions? Commissioner Kulik?
I'd just like to compliment staff on all the hours that they put into this. I'm trying to think, at our work session, Bill said this was like the 15th, 10th amendment. So a lot of work, a lot of effort was into it, and I think it gives us a good roadmap for the future.
Commissioner Gillis, I think I, yeah, saw your hand.
Part of the plan is to encourage more homeowner-occupied housing, and also, on the other side of the coin, steers us in the direction of filling a missing middle, a rental housing for the missing middle. As I said, the last work session and city commission meeting, that I don't think it's in the city commission's purview to get involved in the marketing of housing units. I think the business of housing can be accomplished through the developers that we have here in town. I don't see the value for taxpayer money to be given to a developer to fulfill this missing middle. And I think primarily this portion of the action plan will be for parcel B and the developer who plans on putting apartments there, in the range of $700 to $1,100 for those apartments. And I think our taxpayer dollars can be spent elsewhere more wisely.
Any other comments on this before we vote on it? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, I believe that passes six to one. And the last part of the redevelopment-ready community process is the branding, which we are underway, correct?
Branding and marketing plan, yes.
All right. Excited for that to be done. Item number 16 is the last thing on our agenda, the regular agenda, which is an appointment for a voting delegate and alternate for the Michigan Municipal League Conference.
Yes, the conference isn't until September, but MML requires the delegates to be identified by August, excuse me, August 21st. And at this point in time, myself and Jacob Kane are the only individuals from the city registered to attend the annual conference. And the voting really is only about election of trustees to the MML board and adoption of some potential policy statements they're looking toward. So we're recommending that you authorize me as the primary voting delegate and city planner Jacob Kane as the alternate, since those are due by the 21st.
I see a motion from Commissioner Kulik, seconded by Commissioner Joseph. I sense a pattern this evening. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, congratulations. You get another job.
Such a heavy responsibility.
It is a big one.
Announcements on city-related issues and new business. If the commissioners are okay, we got to ask city manager to give us an update. We've gotten a lot of emails and questions about the PFASs, I don't know how we pronounce it or what we say about them, but if it's okay, I'll have city manager start with just a little statement about those first, and then we can go into commissioner comments.
The term that PFAS stands for is words that I can't adequately pronounce myself, so I'm just going to call them PFAS. And you've seen a lot in the news about PFAS through the state of Michigan. So I just wanted to let you know that we've been following that. We were aware that the Roosevelt Refinery Site on the north side of Pickard has been tested and has identified PFAS in that location. I guess the good news is that site is contaminated with a number of things and has a number of remediation activities in place and has for a number of years. What we don't know is whether those remediation activities really deal with PFAS adequately or not and protect it from getting into the river, but the testing will certainly help us to know that. What we do know is our main well that supplies our water supply is considered upstream of that location, and our wellhead testing that we've done doesn't show that it looks like there's any impact to our water supplies from that location. Obviously, we have no guarantees of that, and we won't know. And there could be other sites within the city that would have PFAS that could impact our water supply. So we don't know if we're impacted yet or not by PFAS. The state DEQ has been testing, has put a plan together to test every municipal water supply in the state of Michigan, and the communication that we received from them indicated that all of that testing would be done by December of this year. We recently heard that we're getting towards the top of the list, and we expect that our testing could occur sooner rather than later. It appears they're working their way north at this point, but we don't have a date yet of when it's going to occur. Certainly, we are being very cooperative. We're as interested in knowing if we're impacted as our residents are, and as soon as we know it's been tested and we have results, we will communicate with our residents about the results of those and determine what, if anything, we have to do. So we really don't know enough right now to know if we should be worried or not worried, but we will have that testing results from the state. And we've chosen to wait to have the state do it because it's a very specified, very difficult test to do. They've already contracted with a firm to do that that is using up a lot of the lab information or lab time to have the testing done. And especially now that we know we're getting towards, or we believe we're getting towards the top of that list, we think it's best to wait and let that firm do the testing on our behalf. So as soon as we know more, we will let you know. There was an article in Today's Morning Sun paper that was fairly thorough about that. I think I just had a little bit more information than what was in the article, possibly. So we'll let you know, and we'll let the public know as soon as we learn some more.
Thank you for sharing that with us. Yes, Commissioner Gillis has a question about that?
Yes. Are they going to be testing old dump sites? And the one I'm thinking about is Chippewas, probably 100 years ago, by the river, behind the Fisher Girl Scout cabin?
We don't know exactly where they're going to be testing. We know they're going to be testing all of our water supplies, but we don't know what testing they're going to do outside of that at this point. But we will certainly, as we learn more, we can let you know.
Commissioner Kulik, did you have a follow-up question as well?
No, I just had something else for...
For announcements?
Yeah.
I am happy to hear it right now, if you'd like.
For those of you that aren't aware, we had a water main break downtown, and the, as usual, our water department and street department were on it quickly and took care of the problem, and good job, guys.
Can I add something to that, just to give an update on it? We did, we had a fitting that failed, is what happened, and it has been repaired, and the hole has been filled in. But we're concerned about some damage that may have been done to the underlying of some parts of the street there. So as we have to fill where the hole is that we dug out, we will also likely be lifting up some additional asphalt in that area so that we can make sure the underlaying, whatever it's called, the base is solid, so that we don't have sinkholes later. So once we have somebody lined up to do the paving, we will rip up more of the asphalt, look at the base, make sure it's appropriate, so the patch will be much bigger than what you see today. And we're going to try to do that fairly quickly. We're getting prices from contractors at this point to know what that will cost to do. And depending on the amount of it and the timing, it may come back to you either as a confirmation of an emergency purchase, or we may ask you to approve it beforehand, depending on the timing. But we want to make sure when we fix that road, we fix it right. So we'll be looking at that over the next couple days to complete that. And the businesses along that block are under a boil water advisory for the next 48 hours. It's just that one block, and they've been notified, and we will test the water and let them know when it's lifted. But that doesn't apply to the whole city. It's just that one block on Broadway Street.
Thank you. And I will say that I saw Max and Emily's taking cold water down to the employees today. So thank you to Max and Emily's, who not only do a great concert series, but also, you know, show up in time of need.
We had a lot of cooperation from downtown businesses, and they were very understanding and patient today, so we appreciate that.
Any other? Commissioner Gillis?
I'd like to let the residents know, our students are trickling back into town. So if you see them come into your neighborhood, please extend a warm welcome, introduce yourself. Hopefully, be very neighborly, and in turn, they will be neighborly back. So welcome our students.
Commissioner Ling, do you have something? You look like you have something.
I wanted to thank the city manager for the update on all the work that's been done since the storm last year. And it was amazing to look at how much has been involved and how much more there still is to do. I was interested, as I indicated, in the question about the claims from private owners. And part of that was because I had seen, I'm going to say three or four months ago, maybe longer than that, something in the Connections newsletter that had to do with timing on when an event occurs and meeting that deadline if you're going to file a claim. And what I was curious about was, that was part of the reason why I was asking the question. I wondered if some people had just missed the deadline, but that doesn't sound like that was what the problem was. I wondered about how long that deadline is and how someone who was involved would know in a timely manner what the cause was, whether it was a defect on the city part or just the...
Whenever there's a sewer backup, there's a state law that says a property owner has 45 days to file a claim based on a sewer backup. And so obviously, that time has passed. That is not why the claims were denied, though, it was because of the timing. The way a property owner typically knows is typically when we're called in, if it's a sewer backup, or if a local plumber is called in. Information is shared with them at that point in time about the timeline, and we have the information on our website for them to be able to fill out the application and so forth. But as I indicated, even though the law says you have 45 days to file a claim, those claims are not often granted because the state law is very clear that the only time the city is responsible for that is if we have a known defect in our line, or we have a known defect in the maintenance of that line. So it's kind of unfortunate because people think, oh, if I get it done in 45 days, I'm going to get some compensation for it. But it's really quite rare, according to the state law and the case law, about when we would pay for those claims.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, I just had a couple of other things. One, I wanted to thank both the city clerk and the county clerk for their hard work on the elections this week. I know there was a lot of issues with our system, but I don't think that it was, I know, it was not the fault of either, any of the staff members here, and they've put a lot of long hours and time in. And so thank you to them for being able to run our elections securely and safely. And also to the first responders who helped with the safety night on Saturday. I know my husband brought my daughter down and got tattoos and stickers and a fire hat, and she went through a fire school and climbed out a window because it was full of smoke. She loved every minute of it, and I still hear about it every day.
Hopefully, they were temporary tattoos.
They were temporary tattoos. Yes. She really would like real tattoos, though, of the police badge. She told me she wants them to stay there. So she, you know, it was very influential. She was very excited. She told me again, three times today, how to climb out the window if there was a fire. So what you're doing helps. Kids are retaining that information, so thank you to them. And with that, I will open the public, unless someone else has something else, but I don't think so, will open the public comment on anything related to the community. So this is your opportunity to come forward. You have five minutes to speak, and just ask that you give us your name and address.
So, good evening, city commissioners and staff members. My name is Jyotsna Pandey. I live at 1016 Sweeney, Mount Pleasant. I currently serve as a faculty in College of Medicine, Central Michigan University. I'm also a physician, although I retired from active practice a few years ago. I work as director of a program, which is funded I work as director of a program which is funded by Michigan Health Endowment Fund for the next two years, to help us establish the program in the community. The program is about healthy aging. The goals of the program, we're looking for volunteers for this program, and we will provide home visits with our students and a staff or a faculty member to look at the wellness of the individuals that we will visit. Our goal is to provide wellness screening to older adults in the community by a house visit, by a home visit. What do, what does CMU get out of it? We expose our students to older adults, older adult population. This is one of the exposures they never, almost don't get during their training period. So this helps them develop geriatric skills. So basically, the community helps us train our students as well. In addition, there is improvement in the older adult wellness, and that reduces their fall risk, which prevents morbidity, mortality. One of the largest costs to the health system is when an older adult falls, and about, when somebody falls, about a third of them get morbidity. Some of them can even die from it. So that's kind of, the point is to prevent that and increase the years they can live independently in their homes. Future goals are to continue the program, and CMU is, College of Medicine especially, is dedicated to continuing it with the curricular resources and other CMU resources. If we have to go and get other funding agent areas and get the funding to continue it, in case we need it, we will do that. This is a curriculum, a curriculum program that will keep on running in the community. We hope to provide home-based exercise program as a follow-up for it, because once we go and screen people for fall risk, if we do find fall risk, something needs to be done. So it will be, again, a peer-to-peer coaching or a home-based exercise program that we are working with Commission on Aging in Isabella County to help provide. Region 7, Area Agency on Aging, has funded some parts of that exercise program. The most frequently asked question that I get when I go and talk to the community is, how does this impinge on their primary health care? Because this looks like something that is being done by primary health care practitioners as well. So this does, this is a completely different program. When somebody goes to visit their primary health care practitioner, they look for either diseases or absence of it or control of diseases. What this program does is it looks at wellness. It screens for a number of things that impact wellness of an individual. You're not sick, if you are not sick. Even then, this kind of a screening is needed. We screen for fall risk and other wellness measures, which are defined by the Center for Disease Control. So it does not impinge on it, it does not compromise it in any way. It is a program which is completely different from the primary health care or specialty health care or any kind of health care that a person has. And since we, at the moment, we have Michigan Health Endowment funding, it is at no cost to the individual. And we also feel that in the future also, it will not have any cost to the individual. If there is any money that comes in, it'll come through Medicare directly. Any other questions that I can answer?
Sounds like a good program.
Yeah. Tony, did you have Commissioner Kulik?
I was wondering if we can put this flyer on our website that some of the elderly folks in town, like myself or my wife, might see it.
Thank you. And maybe Mindy will write an article about it, since there was such an exciting meeting tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else who has any public comment for us this evening? All right, I'll close that and ask that we recess to upstairs, Conference Room A, to have a work session on sidewalks, no removal.